Figure it out. Do you sound like... Ask questions at the time of the vote, what does it entail? You could ask. Don't kid or dance or something. I know it's a bit more than enough. I do. I know. Eat more chocolate, Danielle. I know, I'm catching your eye. Because if I do it now, I'll be eating it during the meeting and it'll never make it home. Don't want not making home. Okay.
Good evening. We will call to order the agenda meeting of Marshville Borough Council, March 12th, 2019. If you will all please rise for a moment of silence in our pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And if we can have a roll call, please.
Here.
Here. Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Okay. Do you want me to mention this first?
Sure.
Okay. I would just like to mention tonight that we will be having an executive session for personal matters on action item 9D. Just to let you guys know that. Okay, we don't have any... Oh, you would like to do that? Sure, why don't you speak about it?
You go, John?
Yeah.
Lights, camera, action. Could somebody get the lights for us? We have a surprise, secret video for your enjoyment tonight, but no popcorn.
Hello, my name is Debbie Smith, president of Marshville Borough Council. And as my... Speak to you a little bit about our town. Marshville is a quaint little borough on the banks of the Delaware River between Bristol and Yardley. Our town is rich with historical sites for you to visit, such as Greystones, the site of the first land purchased in Pennsylvania, or Summer Seat, a Georgian style mansion from the 1700s that once served as headquarters for General Washington. Take a walk or bike ride along our canal path. This canal path is part of the 65-mile D&amp;L Trail Connection from Easton to Bristol. Marshville is centrally located to nearby cities and surrounding communities. So it makes a great place to live, work, and have a business.
Actually, John, if you want to bring your laptop up to the dais, we could just huddle around it and watch it. Yeah, bring it on up, we'll do it now. If somebody could put the lights back on. Well, actually, leave them off, maybe, for a minute. Unfortunately, our studio audience won't be able to see this, but... Well, this is a first cut, this is still in...
I'm cold.
Did you get a... Did you get a royalty for that?
People may know about the history of Morrisville, but they may not know how we're moving toward a bright future as a town. We're repaving our roads and redeveloping vacant sites. Travelers flock to our charming, quaint downtown business district to check out our wonderful restaurants, like La Villa, where incredible Italian cuisine is served. We offer several resources for businesses to ensure that they're successful. The Morrisville Economic Development Corporation and the Morrisville Business Association are actively making strides to reutilize spaces downtown for commercial purposes. Homes are being built. Close to it all, Morrisville is just a quick commute away to several major cities like Philadelphia and New York. If your business is here, you'll see the benefits of city...
I don't know how he got in there.
So you, so you, John?
He gets royalties.
How that Morrisville was considered to be our nation's capital prior to DC, this is just one of many historical facts about our town, where the Revolutionary War played out in our backyard. In fact, the Summer Seat estate is where George Washington planned the Battle of Trenton. Visit Greystones, where the boulders on the ground reference the first land purchased in Pennsylvania, which took place in 1682 between William Penn and the Lenape Tribe under a great white oak tree. Check out Delaware Canal State Park, where trade and commerce once moved margins up and down the Delaware River. After all these years, the towpath is still accessible. And of course, there's Robert Morris Plaza, which celebrates our borough's namesake, the financier of the American Revolution and the signer of the Declaration of Independence. Morrisville, Pennsylvania, rich in history and looking forward toward a bright future.
Nice.
The last but not least is actually not finished.
This is going to be total of five?
It's just a generic...
Anybody can live in a neighborhood, but not everyone gets to reside within a true community. Our vast array of community organizations not only provide opportunities to give back, get involved, and come together. They create a sense of pride for our city and continue to help forge the community our residents are proud to call home. Doing better by working together. Community starts here.
That's the last one they're doing.
Are they on the website?
No.
They're still...
They're not. These are still in editing.
Okay, cool.
This is just the first cut.
Yeah, yeah, he does, yeah.
I think it's broadcasting.
Okay.
So we hope to have this finalized in the next couple of weeks, and then you'll find them on the website. And if we stick with the CGI program, we can periodically have them back to update and their community videos.
Very nice.
Okay, so, sorry about that, we couldn't get that up and running, but we'll do that in the future for you. Okay.
They're great.
All right. Public comment. Anybody, is there anybody signed up on that? No one signed? Okay. All right. We have no one for public comment tonight. Okay, we're just going to go over what our agenda would be for Monday night's meeting. We're going to have approval of the minutes. There's three of them for January 22nd, February 12th, and February 19th. If anyone didn't get these in their packets to review, they should have. Otherwise, contact the borough and they'll make sure that they resend them to you. Got any questions on them, please let the management know so they can make the corrections for you. Finance, same thing this week. You will be getting your treasurer's report. Please take a look at that. If you have any questions, please call the office to Mike and the manager. It will be a motion to approve your bills. You also get your bill list, same thing. Anything on there that you see that you need to question, they'll be more than happy to answer those questions for you. Mayor's report. He's not here tonight. What we did get late last night, was just handed to us tonight, was the mayor and the chief would like us, I haven't got the right thing here, would like us to hire a part-time police officer.
Yeah, we included this in your folders tonight. Not sure if you wanted to act on this tonight or have it on your agenda for Monday.
Okay, so I guess I'll take a consensus with everyone. Like I said, we're just getting this tonight, so we probably haven't even had a chance to read it. It's up to the council what you would like to do. If you want this to go on for a regular action item on Monday, it's not stipulated on here. It can be tonight or on Monday night, whatever you would like to do.
I'm fine with Monday. Do we know how many part-time positions are currently full?
That will be the eighth.
Seven, this would be the eighth.
Eighth one, mhm.
I'm comfortable with Monday as well.
I'm fine either way.
Ali? Ted? Doesn't matter, you're either Ted, are you okay with it? Okay, can we just add then to Monday as the next action item? Would that be okay?
We will make it 9H.
Do you want me to read any of this at all? Wait till Monday night on this, who this officer is, or just wait till then?
Yeah, I would, because they all have a copy of what was in your folder.
Okay, just review it, then Monday we'll read who it is, okay. Thank you.
Let me get mine.
So that's going to be 9H, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we'll of course have our council, junior councilperson here with his report. Next we'll go on to the action items. I'm just going to go over A and B. We did have the redevelopment authority was here at our last meeting. They did do a full presentation. Everyone got that in their packet, as well as what they had read that night. So what we're going to have here on 9A is what they spoke about that night, which is a motion for the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority to begin the process of expanding the boundaries of the enterprise zone within Marshville Borough. Just to give you, just a short recap of what that actually is, so that people understand it didn't say it. It's an area that has been designated by the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, or DCED, as financially distressed and disadvantaged. First established in 1997, was re-designated in 2010, and that designation expired this past summer, July 1st, 2018. The redevelopment authority, as the local administering agency, intends to apply on behalf of the county and participating municipalities for the new enterprise zone designation under the DCED's Keystone Communities Program. And that program would run for a five-year designation. It is not only going to include us, but some of the other municipalities that were also in the original enterprise zone program, which were Township of Ben Salem, Borough of Bristol, Township of Bristol, the Falls, Township of Falls, Marshville Borough, Pendell, and the Borough of Tullytown. It doesn't cost the borough anything to be part of this, and it definitely would help with things as far as redevelopment. So it's something that the council should consider. So that's up. I don't know if anybody would like to speak about it? Since you had their presentation, any other questions that you need to ask?
I have no questions.
Okay.
It was a pretty good presentation.
Yeah, yeah, it was. Okay. The next one, 9B, is going to, another thing that they spoke about, the RDA, which was a motion to authorize the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority to create an alerta district within Marshville Borough. And just to give a little information on that again. What it is, is state law authorizing local taxing authorities to provide a temporary tax abatement for new construction for improvements to industrial, commercial, and other business property in deteriorating areas. The alerta district boundaries are established by the local municipality. They must meet criteria under PA Urban Development Law. Note, Marshville Borough hasn't established certified redevelopment area already. Local taxing authorities, the borough, school district, and the county also have to approve any of the alertas, adopted the terms of the alerta through the resolution or the ordinance, which is what you would be voting on. So that also is to help with redevelopment. So I don't know if anyone has anything else they would like to ask about it?
Just to clarify, and make sure I understand properly, this doesn't mean that they don't pay taxes. This means the enhancements they do to the building, it's taxed at the current rate, and the enhancements are delayed in increasing the taxation.
Yes, and according to what you said up on the individual alerta for that development is incrementally... It really depends on what the council body decides, what they want to give. It can be different for every development.
So they're going to provide us a guidance, and we're going to make a final decision on that guidance?
Correct, that's right. And your attorney's going to be involved in that, and they're going to, you know, give you the information on what to do, when that particular, whatever the business is asking for.
And that's what I took from the conversation too, yeah.
Yeah, some people think they don't pay any taxes at all, and they do. They pay what the existing taxes are on that parcel or building that they have. It's the development part of that, and it's also an incentive to get developers to want to come to your town and spend the money, and to, especially rehabbing buildings that are distressed. So it's just a tool for them to get cheaper loans and things too, you know, so that helps.
And remember, it's not unilateral decision by the borough. The county and the school district have to agree.
Gotcha.
And just because you're designating a zoned area, or I'm not saying zoned area, but a specific area for this alerta to be, doesn't mean that the business automatically get it.
Right.
Every developer, everyone that needs it or wants that, must come to the borough individually. It has to go through all the same processes everybody else. Doesn't give them a free pass, they automatically get granted it. So everybody knows that that just isn't something that happens. Everyone must apply separately and be granted it.
Got it.
Are we able to put any sort of specific parameters in this? Time frame, area of the borough, anything like that?
I believe the RDA, if you look in your presentation, there was a map that they actually gave, and it showed what the areas were. It's small, but I remember the big presentation.
I have a map for the enterprise zone, but I didn't see a map for the alerta.
Yeah, they would, depending on what area we want included in the alerta district, they'll map that.
Well, this motion says, call to authorize the RDA to create the alerted district.
Right, they're going to have to provide us with documents for the borough to approve.
Well, that's what I'm asking, are we giving them any sort of parameters?
Well, yes, if the borough wishes to proceed with it, we'll have to give them parameters.
Is that going to be a future motion, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Right. Right, this is just to get them permission to help us create that area that it's going to be.
I assume this is just the start of a process? We say, okay, we want to go with it, then they'll come back and say, here's what we propose, and then we can have changes?
Yes, you'll also have to decide for what period of time you wish the abatement to carry for, whether it's a sliding scale, or if it's 10 years or five years. I think a while back, we distributed, just as FYI, a copy of, was it Danville?
Danville, and I believe another borough maybe, but Danville definitely.
Yeah, just as an example of what alerta ordinance looks like.
And theirs was a sliding scale. And they're pretty close in size, you know, so it was an easy one to get a hold of. And I spoke with their code enforcing and their, some of their council to find out how they did it. And then I was able to get a copy to just give as a sample. But it doesn't mean that we have to do it that way. It depends on what the council decides, you know. Okay, is there any other questions? I'm sure if there's anything you think of, once the meeting's over and you'd like, I'm sure the RDA will answer those questions, or the administration just send over an email for it, and they will get that information to you before Monday. Okay. 9C, I'll just read it, but I'm going to ask the manager to actually speak on this, because I spoke with him, and he called me to say that this actually needs to be moved on. 9C is a motion to authorize emergency roof repairs to the public library, estimated at $18,700, plus additionally $3.50 per square foot for any damage of wood replacement once they take those shingles off and find out what it is underneath, so there'll be a slight difference in the cost. I'm going to ask our manager to speak about the monies, as to where that will be paid for. So Scott?
Well, we, as you know already, we are pursuing a dual path here. One is, we're trying to establish grants for a full roof replacement, but that is going to take some time. So the other track on that path is that we're looking to do some emergency repairs. The funding for that will come from the library fund, as well as the general fund, in order to cover that expense.
So, just so everyone knows, it's, we all know it could take a little while if we do get one of the grants. It's quite a bit of money. We're estimating for that roof to be replaced, and we'd probably have to also apply for a CDBG as a match on some of that, that we would have on our match to help out. So that's going to take a little bit. In the meantime, it's going to prevent some damage that's happening to the building. So it's something that we really need to consider, to give them a little bit of breathing space to preserve that building.
Yeah, remember the, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Remember the Keystone Grant we had talked about, I guess a month or two ago, only covers 50%. So we will have to structure a couple of grants in order to do a full-scale replacement there. So in the meantime, we're looking to proceed with this repair on an emergency basis, since it's an active leak.
Okay. Anyone have any questions they want to know?
Do you have any idea, percentage-wise, what percentage is going to come from each fund?
No, that'll depend on the final cost. You know, there was some excess funding in the library fund.
Contingency?
Yep, and...
Do you want me to read some of these off, of possibilities?
No, that's all right. We've got library fund contingency, building maintenance, which wasn't much there to begin with. And then between general fund, if we need to suck up the difference, it'd be from building repairs that we had earmarked for the municipal complex here.
So we're just waiting to find out what kind of damage is under some of those shingles when they take them off, to find out what the difference, maybe it won't be the wood that much replaced, but if we let it go, you're definitely going to have a bigger cost to maintain that until we can get a grant for it, so...
The way this is worded, are we approving any additional change, depending on condition? Or will it come back to us for an approval of a change order?
Well, I'm hoping that this is a good number, but, you know, we never know what we're going to find once this thing starts. So if I have to come back to you with a change order, then that's what I'll do.
Okay.
Should we put some kind of amount that says, you know...
With $21,000 acts?
Up to this amount, without coming back for where else we could get it?
Actually, the contractor that we've been talking to about this project was referred to us by the borough engineer and specializes in historic structures, including working with Slate. And they've taken a good look at it, and they're pretty confident in their estimate. So for the time being, I think we're going to stick with the number we're requesting.
Okay, so if it turns out that it's something blown out of the water we're not expecting, you will come back to us first before you go past this, some crazy number.
Well, no, because we don't have to wait a month to remobilize, but I'll, you know, certainly contact you all to let you know that we had to make an executive decision.
Okay, all right. Anyone else, any questions on that? Okay. 9E, this is basically, we do this every year. Everyone probably knows this is the consortium road material bid through the Bucks County Consortium. Is this, I don't know, was it, we get this in our package, or is this coming up? We're going to get this, because I don't remember seeing this. I could have, but it was...
You haven't seen it? This is for road materials, where you previously approved gas, diesel, and salt.
Salt, right, salt.
So this is for gravel and...
The patch, okay.
Coal patch, hot patch. We have the, a copy of the bid results from the consortium, if anybody wishes to see them, but no, we did not include it in your packet, because it was quite thick.
The lowest bidder, okay, yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
And we couldn't not, we don't have any say over the vendor anyway, because the consortium bid it, so...
Exactly, yeah, yeah, we go as a group in there. So I don't know that anyone has any questions about that. Okay, you know what, did I skip over, I'm sorry. I'm going to flip back, let me wait and go through all the action items, and then flip back to 9D that we need the executive thing for.
Sure.
Can we do it that way? Since we're not voting, we'll just take it out of order a little bit, that's what I thought would be better. 9F, you got tonight. You can read this. It's a call for motion to authorize the appropriate borough officials to execute the revised contract of Morrisville Police Association.
Actually, you didn't get that tonight. That'll be in your packet tomorrow.
Yeah, the one was for the, that was the library thing, you gave me the policy, I'm sorry. Okay.
And really, it just reflects the change in the years that you previously approved.
And we, yeah, what we just extended the contract for.
Compensation adjustment, yeah.
Okay, all right. 9G, this we do also, they do some testing around town. So this is for the Marshville Borough to participate in the Bucks County Department of Health 2019 mosquito control program, and they treat municipality properties with mosquito control. 9H was, of course, we're going to add the motion on there for the police officer on Monday. Okay.
Madam President, you jumped over 9G pretty quick. Is there any cost to the borough for that?
There's not.
Sorry about that. Is there any of the questions on the mosquito one? Okay. Usually we get a little memo from them to explain everything they're doing, or if they've tested, they'll tell you where's tested positive. I think last year it might have been Manor Park, there was a little testing down there.
Yeah, they send a packet out every year. That will be in your meeting packet tomorrow.
Yes, you'll know exactly where they're doing those test sites. Okay, just real quick, because there's only one on there, the appointments for the library, of course, are coming up?
Yes, I asked Diane from the library to join us tonight, just in case there were questions about the number of seats, or the people expiring, or anything like that about the library. She's here.
Yeah, and I actually attended their meeting last night, so I could discuss with the board and with Diane what we have on our roster, because we're trying to update the roster. That's why you haven't got a new one yet, to get all the dates to line up and the names to be proper on who's left and what positions are open. So we did straighten that out. And there are three seats, and there's four people that have sent letters of interest. You've all gotten those in your packets. Some came in December, some came in January, I believe, and two just came recently. So there's four. But Diane and I and the board went over the roster, and we have straightened out who's actually still on the board, and the seats that are coming up, that are expired, or have not asked to be re-pointed back on, so those are the ones you'll be voting on. And we'll straighten out, the reason we straightened out the date, which I explained to her, and she explained to her board, was we didn't vote in January the one, because in their bylaws, it's always March 1st. So we tried to make sure that we try to bump everything back at the same time, so it lines up and it's not confusing for everyone. So is there anything, Diane, you would like to ask about that? You're okay with everything we talked about last night?
No, I appreciate everything getting straightened out.
Okay, all right. And then we can also, if you need a copy, can make sure you get a copy of all that too, of exactly who and the dates they expire, and all, so you can have for your records also, if you'd like, when we update the roster, okay? All right. Okay. We're going to bounce back to 9D, so we're going to step back for a executive session for a little bit. So we will be back in a few minutes. Okay, um, we're gonna bounce back to ninety, so we're gonna step back for a executive session, uh, for a little bit, so we will, um, be back in a few minutes. Sorry, Justin. The seats are...
Something that was starting out to be a good thing. For some accidents, is that the reason? Not the right kind, yeah. It's, it's like trial ballots and not just award. They get hung up on the normal start of the whole shit.
Um, I don't, I don't know how to trial ballots.
Three months to figure it out. So, I'm trying to look at emails if we could. So, I put them in my... And so that's my father. Are you Jake? I heard it. I guess. I could be, you know, each time.
A lot?
Yeah.
No, it's probably, no, you don't have to be a lot.
Thank you. Sorry, you're sorry for the little problems. I know. It's like, wow, it's like, and they got it out of the paper, they kept it out to go to Texas to get to the... It's like, useless. And they all... I don't watch that show. There's Jenny on my... I don't watch them again. It's like, you gotta go through this thing. Really?
Well, I, 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 my, my...
I think it's good if you see that with kids, with that... Just sometimes, like, you're not the first one. This one last night, it was pretty, but it's definitely not bad. It's like, uh, all the stadium, you're already dancing, and I don't feel bad.
Right.
So, like, twenty-year-old friends, I'm like, it's not the... Well, that's what she does, and I'm like, I'm not finished. I'm like, you're... Do you know where the sheriff, the sheriff's car was? They were on my, had this... Well, you know, whatever, 'cause they were at all. They're not giving you... And they get on the sheriff, you get this, like, uh, yeah.
You can't tell them.
You know what? I can't feel the emotions now, so I'm like, oh, my nose is there. Yes.
Oh, my.
And people, um, you know... Hey, you're working for the borough.
Yes!
Well, you know, that's, yeah. Yeah. And you do, so they want you to do it. How was that show? Millionaire? It was a millionaire? And she has logged it a lot. They could, so good, they wanted to go and speak to something.
Right.
And she did two shows. So, when we went to film, I think it was like, you know, you have a sign, you got, you said, you want to tie it over, they're not gonna see you, and all this stuff. And I'm like, trying to handle it. As in, that's why. Not a little last-minute freak-out, right? I gotta wait. Some of the copies, I tend to work from a little... It's all later on the original. From our, to everybody, my suggestion was to leave the market. And that was, you don't really want, reading your papers. I'm always supposed to read your papers. I'm going to be in all of them on Monday. So, he's like, wow. Wait, grab them. But soon and now, because the... It's all about yourself. I'm like, you take... I know, freak-out. I think it's all for this one class. That looks, that looks identical. Yeah, she wanted to say that. You can only think of just a little piece, like a dirt on the glass that puts a speck on it or something, you know? Eggs in the glass. Oh, so there's no... Yeah. Palate, and we'll skip a little bit. You can see the difference. I think my voice is like... Those people in town that talk, and I think that... I told them, like, I'm super great, but... Oh, it's kinda nervous, the first time you did this. I'm like, I'm watching.
Yeah.
So, then people started, and I need, I need five people to tell me what the hell, and so I think, yeah, that's what she did, that's what she's... That's the only place I'll be sending back to me. He's like, excellent, you did all this stuff. It can be like, it can be like, one hundred percent. And then I said to him, I said, you do understand how you can't, and this is for one I was... Yes.
I meant for you to answer.
It's like, switch, I'm like, I'm asking a question, but I... Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
Because intact, intact is your part. And you can do like, kind of mask, and you're like, turn it out. So, what was, you're not...
Cheating, like, all the shrimp.
Well, I did see, I did see a lot of people. It did seem...
Very hard to handle.
You need to have a week's worth of days. Right, that's true. Right.
One of my daughters...
What did you try? Time is always... That stuff. Yeah, but we went together. The hardest part was to drag him back out when it started off with people, you know? And I'm like, you had four more suitors than I need. Change his texts. Get him to go out. I'm like, well, I don't think you have no, no conversation, nothing else for that.
Sometimes, when something...
Oh, so it says you're talking about cameras with Mars or something, and you start talking about, you know... Yeah, yeah, exactly. And he's smart. He's just, he's just all over the place, you know? I want, he needs to hear that. It's like, I'm like, you can hear it, you go back to him, the choices are his. You know? Well, 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 it's just... Yeah, yeah. But it was just, somehow, people have gone to your... Like, classes, or whatever was the case. You know, they want to... The war, it was a children's... All right. It all turns out, well, well. Somebody could have more experience, like, you got a huge...
Have a good night.
It's been, it's been... Yeah, oh, yeah, that's done.
Nice looking over the...
See, pipe is fine, man. I'm like, I walk, I'm like...
I got plenty of pipes. Took so long, I got mine. Isn't it sad when you get older and stuff like that, especially...
Isn't it getting older? Isn't this completing, completing two years of, of...
Better, sure.
Offstarts and last year being lost?
Yeah.
And just getting started and actually see something, uh, for us, in the ground, that we're, we're actually paying for final?
Yeah, physically, something, yeah, that's...
I was looking at my office today.
I have to get some more pictures of the inside again.
Working on it, yeah. Every time I go back and come back, I'm back again Thursday, and I do some more things, little by little, and... I actually, I have plumbing, sorry. Oh, have a good night. I'll see you holiday night. See you. Have a good night.
I paid for you.
Yeah. Our, our move is to, um, take, yes, with the area. And that means somebody has to hit the... Where's that? Me standing in front of the age, other than... I'm like, it's great. Yeah. What, what do you mean? You took me to dinner for school. For the case, my son, I would have taken him. I'll hold the one after. Okay. Yahoo, this is... But it's never been... Bye. That was it. Oh, my gosh, yes. Yeah. Oh.
Judge, judge of character, he is.
It is, and the windows, it's just so charming.
This, this...
It's pretty... And we would get letters from people who would visit, so... It was like my remains. What happened was the gardens out there now, I'm saying, yeah. I think it had something to do with the way the sun sets too, because the sun, and if you're driving down Palmer, um, according to what time of year it is, the sun is blinding you. But then it lit that tree on fire, it's so gorgeous. Yeah.
Well, yeah. And the flowers are all...
That's why, yeah. Terrible, you know, it's close to the house. So, they took it there. It was so rotting inside.
Good thing they did that.
But, I mean, it was, it was this huge tree like this, and it's all, it's, it's, you can see it.
I didn't see it, I heard that.
Well, well, those trees, they...
Cause if it went, it would've taken a whole house.
Yeah, yeah, you just can't find out which way it went. Well, the trees, they should have went to the top a lot. Yeah, so it was just all they went, that's...
The example, that's right. Always tell from outside.
Right.
That's not... But, yeah, they saw it, and why did it...
They, all of them, all the trunks that were down, I, I've got pictures of this, they're all... Imagine that following a kid. Yeah, yeah, it's true too. Well, Diane would be able to help us, we have, you know, Diane, she's an arborist, she would be able to... Maybe, right, right, you can, I was thinking, you can treat them or prevent the spread or... I know they took a lot of cash.
So, it makes it cool out here.
I know.
With sweat masks.
Okay, we will resume our meeting from the executive session, and I'm gonna turn it over to our solicitor, so he can make remarks about the motion.
Okay, yeah, obviously, this was a personnel matter that was under discussion in an executive session, and the decision was made to withdraw, uh, item...
Yeah, they, they do help out quite a bit and they actually get a lot of support from the residents in the area to help with that. It's a very good cause. Okay, anyone else?
Madam President, I just have a request for council to consider.
Okay.
The folks who have taken up cleaning up the levee had requested some trash cans along the levee.
Okay.
Some nice heavy duty ones that would also be aesthetic as well as just being trash receptacles. They are fairly expensive, so I'm wondering if council would consider installing one and as a test to make, to see if whether they would hold up to graffiti and/or.
Getting tossed into the river.
Being thrown and rolled down the levee into the river.
You mean like all the previous trash cans that were out there?
Were they bolted down securely?
I'm sure.
I mean, the benches are still up on the levee, they haven't made it in the river yet, so.
Yeah, but they get their share of abuse.
I would love to have them up there, but my question would be who's going to go up there to empty them every week?
Are you waiting? Okay, okay, John.
Oh, that would be, that would be nice if that would happen.
This is our superintendent, John Leder.
The trash cans, we had them up there before. They got kicked over, knocked down, trash thrown into, into the river.
Vandalized, lit on fire.
They're pulled, they pull all the brick out of the benches. It's, I would not suggest putting the cans up there. I mean, it, I actually think they actually make more of a problem. We clean them up, we go up there, we clean up. My guys pick up trash on the levee in the summertime and stuff like that and, you know, I mean, it's up to you guys if you want to do that, that's fine, but I just think you're going to end up having, yes, you're the only one down by the bridge commission where their shack is, that's good because there's somebody there all the time.
Yeah, they're seeing it, yeah.
You know, there are people sitting up on that at nighttime in the park. But again, it's up to you guys how you want to do it. I just, my position is we've, we've dealt with this before, so.
Yeah. Well, I know they usually put them on those posts to go in, was that how it was done before? They were literally on a post and they just?
They kick them over, they, they bend them, they, believe me.
Wow.
Unless you want to put in poles in there that are this thick, I mean, I guess you could.
The big concrete things that they have in Philadelphia.
Yeah, they probably couldn't, couldn't move them that way.
Yeah, so I mean, but getting them up there, again, it's up to council, which is want to do. But I, my suggestion is just, I think the way it is now, it's fine. I mean, there's a little trash up there, but we do, we do clean it up and, you know.
Yeah, and I know that there's a group that comes here to clean the levee like once a month, I think it's beginning of the month, they have been getting together to do it and they, they pull as much as they can out of there.
And I know that's what they want. I think they're the ones who want it.
I believe so, yeah.
So, yeah. I spoke in to Courtney about that before.
Okay.
Again, if she wants, I mean, it's fine, we can do it, but I, my position is I really would not rather have that headache, you know, with picking cans up in the river.
In the river.
Getting thrown into the river.
I have a quick question, Scott, you might be able to answer. I know we're working on accreditation of the levee. Is there any one, any plans beyond accreditation to do anything with the levee that it's going to be ripped down anyway or altered in any way?
No.
Okay.
As far as like putting something in.
That levee's pretty solid, you're not going to move it easily.
Just checking. Just want to make sure.
Thank you.
And I just have one more thing for the manager. On your report on Monday, can we just get a quick update on the status of the tot lot project and the ADA grant project?
I'm prepared to give that to you right now.
Have at it.
Good.
I was at both construction sites this morning. They're going like gangbusters at Patriots Park. They've been pouring for the last two days.
It's been nice.
And I think probably by the end of the week, this week or early next week, that'll be substantially complete. The tot lot project has had a couple of delays due to weather, but they were down there today and that's coming along nicely and I expect both projects will be done on time to meet the April 1st CDVG deadlines.
Awesome.
Well, if I could, now that you mentioned the tot lot, I was going to ask, maybe John could answer this and it might be a temporary thing. When I went by the tot lot and they're working down there, I've noticed it twice now and we haven't had rain for a couple of days, right in that parking lot is like a pool. Is that just temporary?
It's temporary, yeah.
Okay.
They have to, they have to cover the drains so there's no debris goes in, storm drains. So they're, they put in liners inside of there.
Okay.
So there's nothing we really can do.
So nothing goes into the sewer?
It's part of the conservation district's requirements to.
Got it. I figured there was a reason, so I meant to ask you because I, several times I went down, I'm like, wow, this is real, I mean, it's a lot, it's really pooled water there and I'm thinking, is there a backup? Did they have to do something temporarily?
There's three drains, there's three drains that they had to cover.
Okay, oh, thanks for clarifying that because I know it's been asked about it.
John, while you're there.
I'm sorry, John.
Go ahead.
That's right, his mom likes seeing them on TV.
She doesn't watch anymore.
I saw someone was working on the drain at Green Street, Pennsylvania Avenue last week.
Yes.
I see it hasn't made a difference. Were they running a camera or is that a French drain?
French drain.
So there's nothing we can do about that?
No, we just can dig it out. We've dug it out before, you dig about eight, 10 feet down.
And it just fills right back up.
It needs to be redone, the drain needs to be redone, possibly another French drain. We spoke to the engineer about it, there's some things that can be done. I don't think tying, we for years talked about tying it in somewhere else down Green Street, but I think right now we'll do another French drain there, but it's going to cost money and there's.
Yeah, I know.
Something we have to, you know, look at.
Yeah, but it's creating an issue.
Maybe get a grant or something to do it, but yeah.
Goes all the way across the whole street now.
Yeah, we just try to pump it out.
Yeah.
We try, we'll try to pump it out.
Yeah.
And especially with the winter time, I don't want ice piling there, you know, creating an ice situation, so.
Okay, thank you.
While you're there, John, I just want to say thank you for taking care of that giant pothole today on Chambers Street next to the water valve very quickly. Thanks.
Thanks, John.
One more thing, John.
No, she's just, she's just kidding.
I'm just kidding.
Yeah, exactly. Anyone else? Okay, then I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned, thank you. And it's.